All right. Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will call this meeting and retreat of the Winchon Public School Committee to order on today, August 4th, 2022. And we are today at the Winchon School for our summertime retreat. This is a public meeting, however, it is at a remote location, therefore, the recording. We'll start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we do not have a flag here, but we'll put a flag in the middle of the table for us all too.
Close enough.
Here we go. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So this is a little bit of a more relaxed event. We have some food here, help yourself any time. And we will be going over a number of items for probably an elongated period of time. However, we do have to still adhere to the public meeting rules and therefore, I will ask if any, if there's any recording happening in the room other than us, unless Mr. Robb is recording.
I'm not recording. Thank you, Rob.
Mr. Robb's doing like triple duty today.
Now I get to do this stuff. Get my stuff.
I'll also ask if there's any help or comment, which I don't think there is. We don't have a consent agenda today. We do have, we did have minutes from the early summer meetings, but we reviewed all of those at our last meeting, so we don't really have anything to review today. I do think that we should expect minutes from our last meeting from today to sometime in the future. We do have a number of items on the agenda today that Rob Mullin from the central office will be helping with, thank you. However, Superintendent King could not join us today due to a family medical situation. So a couple of items on the agenda we may choose to table or pass over. And so we may want to, we'll address those as we get to them. The first item for us is the superintendent's report, which includes a budget update. It may be prudent to pass over this for now because we're not in.
Please, thank you.
Yep, get settled in. So we'll take a motion to move the agenda out of the way and go to new business.
Mr. Chair.
Greg.
I would move that we pass over number six page for now until our business leader is ready for his presentation, which may come at any time during the course of our meeting.
Your second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye. Aye.
And chair votes aye. We'll go to new business. You'll notice on the top right-hand corner of your agenda that there was a change in the agenda, which I think you all received. The, on our agenda there, I think for a couple of meetings now, we've had the item regarding that school handbook. The new high school principal has reviewed the school handbook, as has the superintendent, and they have determined that no additional updates to the handbook are necessary. So that item has been removed from our agenda. That means that our first agenda item is the Winchon Public School website discussion. As everyone likely knows, we have, our committee has representation on two different websites. One is the school website where there's any towns, towns person you can click on and see who the members of the school committee are. And then, of course, on the town website, there's a separate listing there. The town website, I think, still needs to be updated, unless anyone knows better than I do. Updated in terms of.
Check.
Um, I would give you a guest password.
No, I don't need it, it was just to check.
Okay.
That everything else I have already downloaded, so thank you.
In the hotspot, folks are looking to hop onto a heat line too.
I have a network.
Oh, yeah. Rob, do you want Wi-Fi?
Is that Verizon F S?
Yes.
Password's in the middle of the screen. And while, while folks are looking up Winchon mess, I think the Winchon Town page is in need of updating. I'm pretty sure that that person, Mike, is still listed on the website. So Liz is putting a request to the town manager's office to get that updated, and I assume that they're probably working on that. Today's topic on our agenda is about the school system website and perhaps enhancing our presence on that website. Right now, if you go to that website, there's, I think, our names, maybe an email address. There's not much information there. And the suggestion that actually came from a member of the town was to enhance that website with a little bit more information. And so coming around to you now is an example from another school board. Do you know where this school is? Don't know, everything else. It, it came up in a, in a Google search, it seems like a decent, decent example.
It is New York.
Yeah, like my central school, I, oh yeah, it is in Swartham.
Is this where you live?
No. But it's like an hour and a half south.
Okay.
Unfamiliar.
I think I go through when I go to.
Really?
Yeah, I go through.
Did you get the forward slash beginning?
No, what did they have to click on to Board of Education, they had to click on to get that? Or is it first thing you see when you go on the website?
Definitely not the first thing. You do have to click on the, oh, I think they call it Board of Education. And here you can see that on this page, they had a picture for each individual, they had the name, they had the role on the committee candidate's short biography. For some of them, it looks like this might, it could be their whole biography, but in others, it's obviously truncated. In addition to this, I might only suggest adding our emails, but that is something for us to consider. So the question for the group is, do we like the idea of having a presence on the school's website that would include a little bit of information about us, perhaps a picture, perhaps an email address?
I think it's a good idea. I think it's a very good idea, sure.
So then to do that, we might need to provide to Liz a short bio for ourselves. And so maybe we can put that on a to-do list and call it, you know, a week or two to get that into Liz. Liz is going to work with Bill Lyndon, I think, to get that done. They already know our email addresses, but if you can send name and a short bio, not to listen, look at what you see here, I think it makes some sense.
Yeah, I know. How detailed does she want it? I know that you want I set her bios. Who was that for? She was, I thought she was going to put it on the school website or something. I remember running across yours, but.
Facebook, oh, it's for Facebook. They want to put out a, he's the new.
Right, yeah.
So, so I would say something like that. Liz, I think, is willing to put them into one voice. So, you know, you're going to send yours in one way, you're going to send yours in one way, and Liz is willing to make them sound relatively similar. And then give them to Bill and possibly get it up. Obviously, a head and shoulder shot, I'd say something like what you see on this example would be pretty good. You can tell that these folks all had their pictures taken in the same place. I don't think that's necessarily, I don't think that's necessary for us, but, you know, pick your favorite shot, pick your glamorous shot, and send it to them, okay?
We'll get arranged just to have somebody take a photograph in one of those meetings.
Let's see, let's see what Greg says there, okay? If it's, if it's, if it's from the seventies. We're going to take it. My yearbook photo.
I'm going to set mine in the sixties, so I had to have that here.
Yeah, I hope that's, we're going to catch it by candid of you, like, at a meeting. All right. Okay. Folks like that? Okay, good deal. You don't think we need to go over on that?
No.
All right. Next item is subcommittee definitions and charges. Greg?
Yes, I had asked that this be put on the agenda and my, and I did do this. I contacted other school committees in the region to see if they had mission statements and charges of responsibilities for each of the committees. And lo and behold, they're in the same position that we are.
Oh.
I contacted Ashburnham, Westminster, Athol. Yeah, I thought Athol for sure would have one because they're a ten-member committee and their subcommittees are made up of at least five people. And found nothing. And so what I did was I reached out to MASC, and I haven't heard back from them yet. I'm waiting to speak to Sam Cheesem is his name at MASC, who's going to provide me some guidance on what they have available. And what I'll do is copy that from the website. When I get signed in, I'll bring that to the next meeting. And in the meantime, after I've gotten that, try to come up with some sort of template for us to use to set those up. So I apologize, I didn't have more to present here tonight, but being summer, I sent texts and emails to several of the school committee chairs and heard nothing back in some cases and ended up having to call the administration offices. And they did what they could, but they said they couldn't locate anything to email.
It's a little scary, I thought we'd be alone in that.
No.
After the last meeting, I did contact Maspola Tusk, who were Tracy Milic. Not concerning a mission statement, but concerning subcommittee names, responsibilities. She says that MASC does not have those that's left up to each individual board to create and define their responsibilities. I did also go through the MASC email system. I received several links to their, to school websites, which included those. I did supply them a couple of weeks ago to Liz. Maybe, maybe you should just sort of have to include it in this, but I can get them to her, what Liz was collecting.
It's the chair. So when we take a look at this, we can certainly do something every time, we can see if we can modify and that stuff. I don't know if we're looking for a mission statement.
I guess that's probably not the right term, but.
No, it's not a mission statement, I don't think, anyway. That's kind of a broader thing.
Unless they're responsibilities, I guess.
Yes, right. And, and protocol, procedure, and things like that, you know, how to, for example, how to get on a committee, and how do you select a chair, and, you know, those kinds of things, if you have a big enough committee. And if it's just two people, then.
Right.
You're not going to have to do that, but. So, so I think it's a good thing to look through and see what's available to us, because you're right, I think a lot of school committees are flying by the seat of their pants when it comes to committees. And there is a difference between standing committee and ad hoc committee.
Right.
So the ad hoc committee has just got one, you know, one or two functions, and then they, you know, their job is done.
Right.
Whereas others are, you know, we're keeping all year long.
One of the committees, one of the subcommittees that I ran across that, that we don't have sort of intrigue me, and again, I would think that, that its responsibilities would have to be verified, was Academic Excellence Subcommittee.
Really?
Yeah. Which is out of interest, just in terms of keeping, I would assume that part of the responsibility is keeping in touch with administration and with the educators in the district and then keep, or at least the administrators in the district and keeping the school committee apprised of what's going on in terms of curriculum and teaching and problems that they may be seeing. But probably the subcommittee would liaise with their curriculum director.
Right.
The most.
And with Jonathan.
Yeah.
Meet periodically, like quarterly with Jonathan and see what's going on.
Right. Not a bad idea.
Yeah. Right.
I apologize, I didn't have more to give you, but I just wasn't able to collect a whole lot to bring in, but thank you for doing that, Rob.
Absolutely.
All right.
If we're successful in this, the, the nice thing that I think would come out of it would be having something written down for each subcommittee's charge. I think, I think, maybe you said at one of the meetings where we were verbally going through what each committee did, and you were like, we should probably write this down somewhere. And I'm going to disrupt the court because when, when I started, I think you went through most of them, and it was your perspective on what they did.
Yeah.
Right? And if Greg had jumped in, it would have been a slightly different perspective on what they did.
Right.
So I, I still, I still see great value in doing this in a standardized template. I think you said you were willing to, so you tried to put something together, obviously.
So is that, is that first ad hoc committee?
Well, yeah, just put something together, obviously, it wouldn't be the final draft of anything, like, they have to the rest of the committee.
Yeah.
And then the thought, based on what, what you, what you found, what you heard, what you found from Tracy, and our own understanding is this is just left up to us.
Absolutely.
So we can, you know, say, all right, about, you know, Alicia and Greg are on the blank committee, Alicia and Greg take the first stab, add what you think that committee does and bring it to the group.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good way to go about it. And I could, I could call Liz on Monday, actually, I'll do it tomorrow, so.
Well, just, you know, Monday, get them, I'll just email them out to you.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Greg.
Is that for all of the committees?
Too much.
Is that for all of the subcommittees?
All the subcommittees?
The information you got from Tracy.
That's for all, yes. Any subcommittee, they, they allow the boards to create their own responsibilities for them.
So even contract negotiation, subcommittees as an example?
It's part of local control.
It is.
That's part of local control. In Massachusetts.
Okay, so how do we want to move forward now? Do we want, obviously, we're going to get the information that Tracy provided to Rob, you're going to put together sort of a template, we will, with that template, before we say to all of our subcommittees, please, all right, do this as your next action. Bring that to the, when is the next school committee meeting? Twenty-four?
I don't, is that too short a time period?
Well, of course, we can, September, that would be good.
The first meeting in September, I think, would be a good one.
Okay. Is Liz going to type up notes from this? Sorry, do you know if Liz is going to type up notes?
Yes, she was.
From the videos. Thanks, Liz. Okay. Oh, still on subcommittee charges. Obviously, Karen is not here, I should have mentioned that at the beginning, Karen could not be here because of a medical situation, so she might have written to all of us, did she write to all of us?
Yeah, she did.
Okay.
She said that she was.
Okay, yeah. So I don't know if she wrote this last part to all of us or just me. She has, you know, obviously, a desire to be involved in a communication committee, charge of work, so this resulted in that, in that happening.
Okay.
Okay. School committee policy discussion. So. So one of the, obviously, the policy subcommittee will start to kick into gear here soon. The policy subcommittee has me and Karen, if I remember correctly. And our job as the subcommittee is to consider what policies need to be in place for the, for the school board. One of the policies that was starting to be, you know, thought about going forward was an attendance policy of sorts for ourselves, that, you know, in order to be a member of the board, you have to be engaged in the work, you know, need to be attentive and in attendance. And so the, you know, certainly, we could draft a draft policy for attendance purposes that says to, you know, you should attend all of your subcommittee meetings, all of your school committee meetings. But we asked the superintendent to inquire with the town manager and with legal counsel as to what any type of implications of a policy like that would be. And we have a, an opinion back from KP Law, specifically Brian Riley, who is one of the, one of the attorneys over there, who says that a policy can exist for attendance, of course. However, the enforcement of any type of wrongdoing, any type of lack of adherence to an attendance policy would have minimal, very minimal options. Because an elected official, because we are elected officials, cannot be removed simply because of a, a local policy has been broken. If we were to put into, into effect a policy on attendance, for instance, that had the potential for anything beyond censorship, like removal from a board, that would require attorney general approval. And the attorney general, according to, this attorney is highly unlikely to approve something like that. The, for elected, this is from Brian Riley. For elected officials, the only recourse to remove someone from a board as one possible outcome of not adhering to a certain policy would be a recall. And obviously, that is extreme remedy, quite involved, et cetera, et cetera. I note that, this is again from Brian Riley, I note that one of the suggested grounds for recall is neglect of duties, which could describe absenteeism, but a recall is not as easy as, you know, just.
No. We went through one not too long ago.
Yep. There are other, from the attorney, he says that there are other mechanisms for enforcement of policies like an attendance policy for appointed boards, and that gets very complicated and muddy and is very specific. There's some mass general law and case law that's specific to things like zoning boards, for whatever reason, that's the one that made it in the course.
I believe the town charter says that the board of selectmen can't remove someone from an appointed board if they, I want to say if they miss six meetings a year, they have the ability to.
Really?
Elected officials?
No, no, it's appointed boards. All, yes.
Appointed boards, yeah.
Yes, the attorney did mention that, that in a municipality, depending on what the charter is, the charter may have provided certain powers just by court, but that again is only for appointments, or, yeah, appointments or appointed boards. Elected boards, there's a real narrow ribbon of, of options. So that is only, that is one policy, you know, speaking to engagement, speaking to attendance of, of committee members that we can explore. I'm sure that Karen and I can come up with examples, probably from other states, because Massachusetts won't allow it, but others might, and make that proposal to you. However, it would not be really to be enforced to us.
So if you just spin your wheels, then I wouldn't waste time on it. If we can't enforce it.
You want to say that a lot, but like you did.
If we can't enforce it.
Yeah, there's nothing we can do.
Just makes us look weak when we, you know, somebody breaks whatever, and we try to discipline them, and then we have to backtrack. And so it just makes us look bad. So no, I would say, don't, my recommendation would be to leave that alone. Yeah, I mean, even, even taking the step, the step of censoring somebody, it may make a statement, but it can also lead to a fair amount of, I think, division in, in doing that. Not that something, I, I think basically the, the best thing is just to do something in private, if, if a problem comes up, just for the chair to have a private meeting with the member that's having a problem, find out what's going on, and just ask if they still have the time or inclination to serve.
Frankly, I agree. The attorney did mention that it is always within a board's right, including an individual member, the chair, or anyone else on board, to ask another board member, that's their prerogative to act, to ask, and it's the other person's prerogative to answer or not answer, of course. And it is the prerogative of individuals and boards to ask a member to resign. So if someone was not able to attend meetings, as an example, as using this, continuing this example, we could always say, you know, hey, you know, Greg, you know, maybe, you know.
You're not cutting the.
Alicia, you're not cutting it. Would you mind?
Would you mind, dude? Here's your resignation.
Sign here.
I can also decline that, so.
Yeah? Yeah, the heck with you, I'm sitting right here when I decide to.
Oh, my own committee.
Committee of one.
All right, so if we're all agree, then we'll leave that alone.
Yeah.
Any other?
Is that, is that a vote? No?
You don't have to vote, it's something that's proposed, so. No, but what, part of the, having this on the agenda, the reason for it is really just to generate ideas for policies that would be something that the policy committee would, would work on, other than the norm, right? We can go on the MASC website and see what's there, we can adopt them to our own town, to our own board, that's fine, we'll do that work. But is there anything else that this committee sees as potential that we should consider as we're going to start our work this year on policy?
Well, I don't know, did, Mr. Chair, did, I don't know if it was a couple of years ago, Greg, that, that we hired the law firm to go through our policy book and update it and whatnot? Did you?
Did you recall that, yes?
I don't know if, I don't remember anyone reporting back to us that it was done. I don't know. But that, if it hasn't been done, then I think it's worth the money to have our attorneys go through our policy book and help identify those policies that are no longer relevant and make suggestions or recommendations for policies that, that we need to implement based on the changing world that we live in. At, at depth, there's a bunch of new ones we should consider, concerning things like COVID and, you know, that kind of stuff has changed the world, so there's probably policies we need to either get rid of or write new ones.
How often does MASC out there, because most of the policies we've got basically come via MASC out there?
Yes. And your, your website.
Uh, your, your website has all of the policies listed directly linked to the MASC policy website.
I, I know that they're on it, but I, I had to go there last year for something to look at the policy because I couldn't find my ad copy.
They, um, they update it on a regular basis. Um, I have a, I, in fact, I had a conversation today with Tracy. Uh, she was currently working on section D of the policies and updating several of them.
But we have to vote on those, right?
Well, you have to, you've already voted, really been a part of there to adopt their website, their policy site link. To be able to have that link directly to them and have it on your website, you would have had to have voted to approve that.
I don't know, I don't even have that vote, Greg. I'm sorry, because I don't need to, it's just, you know, Greg and I have been on for a long time, so just trying to get some.
But I can, I can check for you.
Institution, institutional knowledge.
I can check for you, I'll, I'll check with.
If they're, if that, if we actually do that, if we, if they update them every year and we, we get that information and we vote on it, then, then we don't need to do anything. But I, I don't remember doing that.
I honestly don't either, but. So many things this place over the course of.
Yeah.
Seven years that you don't remember everything.
Yes, you don't remember everything. But it'd be worth a look anyway, and if they're not updated, then we need to get them updated. Because I know, just talking to people through my, my part-time job, um, talking to administrators, you know, they're changing policies because of COVID. There's a lot of new things that they've had to take some policies out, put some new ones in. And could I think I'm on right this second? No, you can't. If I thought about it, I'd probably come along. But, you know, we just need to make sure that our policies are up to date and, and legal.
The, the attorney's review, give any sense of about how long ago that might have happened? How much, was it, how many?
They kept yelling, things kept yelling on the board then, right? The point?
Who's that?
Daniel Point?
Yeah, so that would have been.
So that's like five years ago.
Yeah, that would have been before Jones hired.
Yeah, that would have been with Steve.
Yeah. You know that happened? It'd be nice to see.
Yeah, yeah. You know, we should be all, we should be relatively familiar with the school committee policies. I know I've admitted that I need a little work on it. That's the area I need to spend more time on.
So after the attorney's review, did, did we get like a report that said, here's the thirty policy we've gone through and these ones need updating?
You know what was it? It was, it was Dawn, when she was on the Policies Committee. And Dawn used to give us a.
Oh, you're right, she'd give us every week or so, or every other meeting or so. She'd give us a stack of policies to vote on.
And we voted on those.
Yeah.
She would go, uh, her committee, I, I don't remember who was on with her, but her committee, uh, would get reports back from the lawyer which ones needed amendments or which ones needed to be taken out or which ones, what new ones that we should have. And she would bring them, uh, to, to, for us to review. And I think the first week we reviewed them and then the second meeting we voted on.
Right. And she was, I mean, we were getting six or seven meetings.
Yeah. Dawn was very, yeah.
She was pretty shocked at that.
Yeah, she was, that was her strength, she loved policy. So, yeah, so it was all coming back, all coming back.
Yeah. So the official record might be your votes. The official record might not include a report per se.
Right.
Back from the attorneys, yeah.
Right. It, it just looked like our agenda, they would list, uh, they would list the changes or the additions or the amendments. It was right on our agenda.
I suppose I could try to get in touch with Dawn to see if there was ever a formal report.
Yeah.
Or communication from the attorney, but.
Who's Dawn's last name, do you remember?
Dawn.
Oh, she got married.
Front end, isn't it? A R O N G E, is it?
I might still have her number on my phone. Isn't that embarrassing, huh? She's such a good lady, too.
I don't know if she's still working at the car lot or not.
If I still got her number.
This is good. I will only use her name to hopefully draw a memory.
No, I haven't, sorry.
I can get it, I'll, I'll get in touch with her to see if there was.
Yeah, she got married, threw me all off.
She must have received something, right? The, I mean, obviously you all saw policies that you looked at, red lines or whatever you looked at and then approved.
Right.
But she must have received something from the attorney to say, this is what we have found.
Right, well, the superintendents have it.
That's right.
Too.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, superintendents have that somewhere.
All right. So I will ask Liz and Thad to see if, you know, the, the deep dungeons of the, of the by the heavens have any records.
Yeah, that might be a tough one, but.
And if you end up talking to Dawn and she has.
So I think she's on Facebook, so I'll message her.
If you have anything, let me know. Because that would be a good place to start for the policy committee going into next year. Uh, any other policies, you know, thoughts on policy that we should put on our radar to make sure we either have or to add if we don't have them currently?
I honestly can't think of anything right at the moment now. And those, you know, those always seem to be the sort of thing that we end up talking about when something pops up. It doesn't seem to be addressed, but.
Okay. Uh, there is a suggestion motion on your, uh, agenda. However, I don't think we have a, any type of policy proposal tonight to consider, so. Okay, unless we're folks feel otherwise, we'll skip over that.
So to be clear, to address this, where are the next steps? Are we, are we going to contact people from the past to just get the information that's like, that had been discussed, whether it was like the attorney who reflected on this a few years ago? Because I, I guess I'm just, I'm still wondering where our next steps are.
I'm going to start by asking Liz and Thad to see if the superintendent's office has a record of what was done five-ish years ago.
Okay.
If they have it, I'm going to ask them to give it to the policy committee.
Perfect.
Which is me and Karen. Greg's going to check with the previous school committee member to see if she knows or has something. If so, that might be a good place to get it.
I'm wondering though, even though once we get the information, whether it would be, uh, prudent to have the same sort of reveal undertaken now? It's been five, five or six years since it's been done. If, once we get updated on what we have policies, whether they might need to be updated now?
Can we all take a look as a committee and not just you and Karen?
Sure.
Because I think that that would be, it's only five of us. So that's my suggestion is that we all sit down, once we have whatever information you can get your hands on, we all take a look at it, whether it's, you know, via email, Google Docs, whatever. But, um, take it if you can see it, because like I can, I have been a part of school policy. I mean, obviously just here and at pre-grade school, but especially with COVID, with what we already mentioned. Um, I'd be happy to take part in that and then go from there. And even maybe compare it to just a couple of other places too, so we don't have to go to, um, over there just yet.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, I like it.
Okay.
So if we get something, we'll share with everybody. A review from there and we'll see where we're at. Uh, I, I'm not one to just the idea of doing a review if it's warranted. You know, if we get in there and we say, oh boy, this hasn't been done in just fifteen years, not five years, and holy goodness, nothing gained here about culture yet. The idea of review doesn't sound too bad to me, but we have to see it to tell.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Uh, strategic plan discussion. Um, Mr. Mull, I think the superintendent was planning to lead us in that discussion. Did he give you anything?
Not have any of that, no.
Okay. Want to make your motion to table it to the next meeting?
Uh, that might make sense. Anyone else got anything in the absence of the superintendent that we'd like to discuss regarding strategic planning?
So I'd like to make the motion that we table item seven D until our next school committee meeting.
Second. Maybe seven E?
For E? Except for put my glasses.
It's D.
It's D.
No, it's D, Strategic Plan Discussion.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the old agenda. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And a aye. All right, so seven D is tabled and, um, the superintendent is aware uh that this was likely to be tabled, um, and he is prepared uh to walk us through some information that he has on strategic planning, the information that he has or is about to submit to the D H U, the D. Desi, uh, regarding some of the major initiatives that the school has going forward, prior to twenty-three. Um, so he is prepared for that. He is just, uh, aware that we would be tabling it and it would be now moved to the August twenty-fourth. Well, we haven't done that yet. Uh, okay, an update on remote Massachusetts public meeting options. Uh, did you all get the update from Linda Daigle about what the governor signed or the legislature passed a couple of days ago? No, okay. So on July eighteenth, so that's going back a couple of weeks, uh, the governor did sign a bipartisan bill that came out of the state legislature uh that basically continues the existing, uh, law until March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Or I shouldn't say the existing, the one that expired for a few weeks there.
Right.
That has now been extended to March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. So that means that we continue to have the prerogative, um, to have some version of remote meetings. Uh, we have not done that, obviously, in many months, uh, since the height of the pandemic. But we continue to have the prerogative to do so now that the, that the law's passed. This is different, um, than the discussion that we have been having over, I don't know how many months, about what modalities we want to make our meetings available in. Obviously, we have been doing in-person, we have been doing the, the, um, the television. Uh, and the topic of making our meetings available on the internet through whatever means, Zoom or something else, continues to be a third, you know, additional modality that we could add anytime we want to. Because as long as we are meeting in person with a quorum and broadcasting, which is what the state of Massachusetts requires, we've met our minimum threshold. And if we get something else like a Zoom or something else, that would just be great. That would be extra, which is our choice to do so. Uh, I did ask the superintendent today if he had any updates on our ability to provide on, uh, another modality. Uh, his most recent conversation with the student, no, the town manager's office, was that they continue to not have the technology in place that would allow them to both broadcast and send it out on the internet at the same time. Aye, there you go.
I mean, I, I'm wondering what the technology needs to be. I know that, um, again, in Athol, the, the school committee members there are bringing their laptops to the meetings. And, um, it's not, it's not a wide open Zoom meeting like we had previously, but they're doing a, uh, basically a webinar. But they're still recording it for, for broadcast. I don't know, I don't know what extra technology you would need.
Recording it in real time, so it's, someone can watch it live or they can go back and watch, like?
Um, it's the, um, AOTV, the cable, the, uh, local cable folks. They, they broadcast it live and it's recorded for playback on, uh, the school's YouTube channel.
That doesn't take much to have a YouTube channel. I don't know what the town has. I think we would have to figure out where the town is first in terms of tech.
All right, we used to have a Blue Channel, but we don't have a Blue Channel anymore. With that, right? With the Blue Channel.
Yeah, when I was in college, we had a Blue Channel. It was just like a network channel that everyone had access to. So if your professor wanted to broadcast it, it would be used onto the Blue Channel there. Pop on.
So, well, because we had a little TV station, if you remember, on the corner by Cumberland, across from Cumberland.
Right.
On that corner there.
The bottom of the hill on High Street, was it?
No, right on, right in, uh, Main Street, the corner where, uh, John Melissa had.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there was a radio station and something else. And from there, we had a town Blue Channel. Uh, out of there, I guess.
Boy, I don't remember that, because I started working at the radio station in ninety-four and I don't remember that ever being there.
Yeah, I remember that, it was a long time ago, for sure. I don't think it was back then. It's after ninety-four, because I was, I wasn't living here then. Anyhow.
Yeah.
The bottom line is, um, you know, maybe we got to get Thad to, to ask Justin, the town manager, what exactly they need for technology. And then what the holdup is and if there's any way that we can assist to getting that technology. Because it's not only having, um, you know, having people watch it in real time, it's also the fact that they could participate.
Right.
At certain times, not all the time, but most of the time they're muted. But, um, like for public comment and things like that. If they couldn't make it to the meeting, they could still do public comment and stuff. So, you know, I, I think we just need to have Thad find out what the, what the technology is needed and then what do we need to do to get it? Is it a capital project thing that we put on the list? Is it something relatively inexpensive? Um, of course, that's a, that's a funny term to use. Um, everybody's idea of what's inexpensive might be different, but, you know, if it's, uh, I don't know, fifty, it's twenty thousand dollars, then let's find the money between the town and us, find the money and buy the technology and let's, let's, you know, move on. So people can be on it, want to be on it. We have a relatively good following during COVID.
Oh, yeah.
Um, probably a forty, fifty people. Of course, a lot of those are teachers, but, um, we did have much better participation from the public.
Absolutely.
Than, uh, what we, what we have now, where we get one or two people in the audience. So, yeah, I think it's worth pursuing.
Thad's, uh, last conversation with the town manager's office was over a while ago. It was not very recent.
Yeah.
And during that conversation, that's when it was shared that the technology did not exist. Uh, basically did not exist, you mentioned it. Uh, and there has been some, it sounds like some challenge getting an organization to come in to set it up for us uh because everyone's doing this at the same time.
Yeah.
And so the larger contracts, which makes it impressive, over small towns.
If that's, if we're down the list, it would be nice. But get out, make sure we're on the list and find out where on the list we are and maybe get some kind of, uh, estimated time of arrival when they can come and do the work.
Would it make any sense maybe to invite, uh, someone from the town government to come to one of our meetings, just to tell us where they're at rather, you know, rather than hearing it? Maybe like Landon and Justin, maybe?
What about the tech person?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, because, I mean, Justin may not know what is needed or what they actually have. So is there someone who is a designated like IT person, I just don't know?
Yep, that's, that's.
It's Dawn.
And also, another thing that might consider is have Bill Clinton and then that guy. You know, so Bill can explain to us what's needed, Bill can share with us.
I'd be surprised if Bill and Dawn O'Neil don't talk once in a while.
Yeah, I, I think they're on pretty good terms. So if they just, okay, what's needed and how much is it going to cost? And is it a, um, you know, backup list? Uh, it's just, they don't have enough bodies. So where's mentioned on the list? Are we nine hundred to ninety-nine or are we, uh, seventeen on the list? Maybe get an idea of when they can come. In the meantime, we'll just be transparent and put it on our website and mention it at our meetings that, um. We're anticipating, I don't know, before the end of the year, being able to do this. Or next year we'll have it or something, whatever. Just be transparent and tell people what it is. Or next week, we'll have it next week. But that's the thing, but I think that's.
In the meantime, though, I mean, I wouldn't mind seeing us, since we're allowed to do it now, at least until March. Maybe once every two months, or however comfortable people are with frequency, doing a Zoom meeting. So that people that might want to participate, might want to talk to the school committee.
I don't know, I like your example of what you saw at Athol. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'd be more than happy to have a laptop sitting right there. So that we can be in person for whoever wants to be in person, on TV for whoever wants to be on TV. And do, you know, create a bunch of pictures on the Zoom.
Yeah, and I believe for public comment, they have it. They, they have a laptop, assuming the school department owns it, set up. So that if people want to make public comment, they can come up to the laptop or whatever they're using for, for video. And can ask a question.
If you're in person.
If they're, if they're at the meeting in person, right?
Okay.
And they can put another laptop so everyone else on Zoom can see. Right, exactly. Let me get on the webinar. Because with the webinar, you know, once, it's easier to control. It's, it's all wide open to people to participate. I mean, because I, if I can't go to the meeting for the paper, I'll, I'll watch the webinar, but I can't. I don't have the capability of asking questions from where I am.
Well, for most of them, it's only public comment.
Yeah.
And that's the only time that they participate, is during public comment. And the only exception would be if we have some.
Well, you know, it's.
Serial issues that we want to discuss and allow people in on the discussion.
It asks that when we, when that's where we figure.
No, I was just saying that, that sometimes during the live school committee meetings, if I'm there in person, sometimes I'll get to ask a question when they're done, just because.
Yeah.
I'm there for the newspaper, but that's pretty rare.
So can we agree that we want to ask the town and school administration to jointly discuss what options exist, what's necessary to bring us to 2022? And present that information to us at a future meeting, perhaps August 24th?
Yes.
Yeah. Timeline, yeah. At the top, you know, I know that they may not be able to give us an exact one, but they can give us a ballpark.
And what do others, so if the news is, we can't get this for six months, or 12 months, or 18 months, for whatever reason. What is the appetite of this group to do something similar to what Greg just described from Athol?
I do want them to do that, I'd be in.
Yeah, I mean, we have to do that for a very long time.
Okay. So we could, we have the, we have the option to hear this information from Dan and Bill perhaps. And at the same time, make, make our own decision to offer Zoom option using our own equipment. Maybe we wait for Karen, because Karen may, maybe not feel differently, but maybe by the August 24th meeting, we decide whether or not we're going to do it, and then for the school year. Plan to offer the additional modality?
Sure.
Cool. I like it.
Next meeting is the 18th.
It is, the next meeting is the 18th until we vote to move it. Were you going? You were not here for that?
Oh, okay.
Hold on. Speaking of which, any other new business? Do we want to let Rob give us his? I can't read, but obviously.
My budget update.
The budget update. Before we do, before we leave new business, a couple of things. One, I'm serious, if there are, if there are other new business items, we should address them now. And the other is that we have a published calendar of meetings. And so if we do have the desire to move one of those meetings, we should do that now, take a vote to do so. I think our, as Rob mentioned, our current meeting is scheduled for August 18th. Prior to the meeting, a board member shared that that date would no longer work. And therefore, the desire is to potentially move the meeting. The proposed date, Rob, is August 24th?
Wednesday?
Yes, maybe.
Will we, I guess we can always go up to the conference room on the fourth floor. I'm just thinking, I'm gonna have to check to see what other meetings that might be taking place that night.
Yep.
And we're gonna go seven, right, instead of six?
I mean, I can go probably six. I just couldn't go Thursday night.
Okay, so six still works. I like six better, but.
Rob, do you see any obvious concerns with that date?
I have nothing on my schedule for that day of the district at this point.
Can you tell Mr. King? Can you see his calendar?
And I just want to thank people on the committee for being flexible enough to want to do that. This is one I can't avoid, and I'd like to be available.
That shouldn't, that shouldn't be an issue for.
Our pleasure.
I'm just glad it didn't impact anybody. Too bad, sorry to go, Alicia, I know how difficult it is. Plus, you have the new teachers.
It's okay.
Trying to get, when, we have that too, right? We have the new teachers thing, orientation coming up.
So, we got something from Wendy? You got it. You sent it to me.
Yeah.
And I didn't have access to Google Doc. I had to request access, which I still haven't been granted, I'm aware of, let me look again.
Oh.
So were you able to get into it?
He might have access and be able to grant it to you. That depends. Like if it's his or if he is like one of the editors, he might be able to give you access and not just. It depends, I don't know.
So.
I'll, I'll play with it.
I came back today to say.
Oh, you did?
I didn't get this. Did anyone else? Anything about teacher orientation?
New teacher orientation is the 17th and the 18th. I'm not sure of how long during the day it's go.
I got it. I'll, I'll give you the skinny.
Breakfast and lunch is scheduled for those two days.
Well, we just go for the opening, usually.
Oh, I thought you were coming for the food.
Yeah.
So we got invited by Wendy.
Cody.
Is it Coté? Oh, you don't know Wendy. You, you know Jill, Janet.
I know Jill.
Yeah, that's perfect. So Wendy Coate or Coté?
Cody.
Tell her Cody.
She was on a couple of committees we started, then on the negotiations, so she does go by Cody. Unless I've been saying it wrong for 10 years.
But whether or not we have a, like a specific time to be there or a specific event.
There's not, I don't know if you have anything on there or not, but I will find out.
She sent this to all kinds of folks, principals. All kinds of folks. Unions.
I didn't get it.
On a second. Orientation, 8/16 and 17. Hope everyone's having a great summer. In touch, you'll find a copy of the new teacher orientation agenda. Look forward to seeing all of you on August 16th and 17th. We'll have a meet and greet in the conference room across from the high school office. If you have any questions or concerns, feel free. It starts at eight o'clock. Eight, eight thirty with breakfast. And there's usually a little welcome from superintendent, the school committee, usually the chair, and the administration. And echoes at nine o'clock. I think each principal introduces the new people, that kind of stuff. And then the WTA has a meeting from eight thirty to nine. Nine to nine thirty, there's roles and responsibilities, monthly meetings, so we're only the first part. Just that eight to eight thirty part, it looks like.
On the first day, the 16th?
On the first day, the 16th. Wednesday, August 16th. I think that's the only part that we really got. The rest of the. Unless you want to go to lunch.
We do have food trucks for lunch.
Chain of life.
Yeah, the rest, the rest is their, their own planning and preparation, each building and the hut.
Did you all go to the food truck thing? Okay, yeah, I saw you. That's right, that's right, yeah.
And when I couldn't get near it, there were like 8,000 people at every truck line.
Yep, I went early. I made the mistake of bringing kids.
Oh, right.
Who only eat hot dogs. All that delicious food. Nope, I ate a hot dog.
Well, after, I was not real impressed with the Bolivian food very good.
No? Of course, I don't know how authentic Bolivian is, but.
So I can't even dry it. I'll just forward to you guys.
I put it in my calendar.
I think it's an option for everybody. I will go if it's August 16th at eight AM, I will go for sure.
Likewise.
Great, great.
Everybody's welcome. It's, it's a nice little thing. And it's also a good way to, so the new people can see your face and know when they hear the name, get an idea.
Are you able to send that document?
I'm sending it right now. And Karen.
Okay, so we'll get that information, but we just heard August 16th, eight AM at the high school.
And I, I definitely won't be it, because that's the week of my fun. So I won't be there, but it'd be good to have some representation there. So I just sent it to you.
Oh, you'll be in the hospital having fun, well, pain medication.
Yeah, pain medication, ugly stuff.
Nothing's as fun. Better living through chemistry.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Great, thank you. That's helpful.
You know what I wanted to add, just. Are we gonna do any kind of ghosting thing or any of that kind of stuff for our committee, or is that not something we want to do?
I think that was maybe part of our strategic plan discussion.
Okay.
Which.
That was part of the plan, okay.
Yeah. So we need to move the meeting, I think we need to vote for that? Those of you living on the committee for a while, I'm pretty sure we need to vote that?
Yes, you have to move to go into executive session, it should be, did they write it on the agenda? No?
Well, uh.
The motion?
No, no, we're just gonna move the meeting, we're talking about the date.
Oh, the date!
Yeah, I'll make a motion, no, no, just, just the date. Make a motion, I think we're gonna move our next meeting for August 18th to August 24th. That's.
That's six to five.
Perfect, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done and done. I will notify, well, I'm sure Rob will too, but I will notify Liz, who will contact the town managers, the town offices. For the space, specific space, and for the audio visual. All right, any other new business? All right, so let's go back to the budget update from Rob.
Well, thank you very much. To update the fiscal year 22. Last report that you saw included a lot of overdrawed account lines. I can tell you that those have all been zeroed out now. And we are currently standing with a balance for fiscal year 22 just under $40,000. Now, we continue to work with Town Hall, particularly the accounting department, Joanne and Deanna at Town Hall. We are working through what remains of our encumbrances, items that we have, or services that we have already created purchase orders for, but we have not received them as yet. Trying to decide exactly which ones are going to be supplied within the next couple of months. And which ones may not. So that $40,000 has a potential for going up. Exactly how much at this point, I'm not sure. But I will obviously continue to keep it updated on that.
So is that money that?
That, that is money that goes back to the town at the.
How much, say again, how many?
Right now, we're at $40,000.
That we give back to the town?
At this point, yes.
That's better than almost $300,000 we gave back a couple of years ago, $250,000 or something.
You may know this, Larry, or anybody else, you know, I'm not a mass education expert, but again, it just be, the only reason I keep bringing up Athol is because I'm there all the time. But they have in their budget an ENP. Is that something that, that we need permission to set up so that we can keep the money? Do we have to get that permission from the town, or?
That is a ability that is only afforded to regional districts.
That's what I believe, yeah.
Single town districts are not allowed to under Mass State law.
What's the logic with that?
I'm not sure.
Not really, all the towns fighting with each other, not wanting to pay.
Well, yeah, I guess it does protect, the ability to do excess and deficiency does protect that regional school district. They're able to keep up to 5% of their total budget, and whether if it's over, they can carry that over into their following year's budget. If there is a deficiency, they're allowed to use up to 5% of their next year's budget to zero that out. But it is, I believe that was created to protect them from, as I said, when the towns tried to or have arguments or disagreements on how the, the design of remaining funds gets first.
Because I, was that a meeting last year where the, the town business manager was going over the, the budget, talking about half a million dollar ENP fund, and I'm thinking, Jiminy Cricket, you know, would that be nice?
So what that, so what that really should mean for us, though, is that we work within the state law to create on reserve accounts where we can, to be able to help fund those. I know we're allowed a on reserve account for special education. We can, or if, I'm not sure if we have, I have not looked into that at this point. But that will allow us to take remaining funds and put that into the, into that reserve account in case of anything happening in the future, you know, catastrophic. Times when, you know, all of a sudden we get three or four students that come into the district and they're out of place with students.
And then we get the second paper money the next year.
Exactly. So, you know, this is delaying that, so then we have to stop paying bills immediately, so that type of funding. But that needs to be authorized by the town to allow us to do that. So that is something I'll, I'll look into, finding out exactly what reserve accounts that we do have available to us.
That would be good, thank you.
So we continue to work with that. I, I really do have to, I know you know her. I have to mention her, Denell Malard. The amount of work that she put in within the last four or five weeks of the end of June and then into July was amazing. She had some vacation time that she canceled to stay to help clean, clean these items up, to get as many of our purchase orders. to get as many of our purchase orders completed, to make sure that the warrants were updated properly. And there's no way we could have done that without her. So I, I just wanna bring that to the attention of the board, just the amazing work that she did.
Good.
Thank you.
Speaking of that, the warrant's ready.
Yeah.
I have it with me, if you would like to take a few moments at the end of the meeting to review and sign, or... But that's, that's up to you.
Yeah, I'll probably be in Monday.
Yep, which is fine. Uh, we just completed the first month of the new fiscal year of twenty-three. I do have a report created, however, I, we, I, I know I had expressed the desire to be able to do that the second meeting of each month, so I did not print that out at this time. You know, it's just getting the new orders in, getting blanket orders created to be able to pay bills as they come in on our, with our regular bills. But, and the budget's in excellent shape for this year so far.
Yeah. Yeah, I like, in good shape.
And also as part of the budget update, an item that was brought up in previous meeting is the passage of the, of the state budget, where it concerns the state picking up the food service costs, the meal costs for both lunch and breakfast for the town. That was passed by state legislature, the funds were in the budget. The governor did sign that. The money is in the budget of that item, and we will be receiving for all students free lunches and breakfast during the fiscal year twenty-three. Also that I heard from Department of Education today is that the town of Wincheton became certified, our application was approved. Even if we, even if the state had not funded that, town of Wincheton was approved for free lunch and breakfast for all students due to the economic level of the town. And that will be in effect for school years twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
Very fast.
And that also is state funds that are used to subsidize the meals?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. I know there was a question on whether the parents need to fill out the applications. We would still encourage them to, because it still allows us to be able to continue following years to potentially keep that free lunch and breakfast going. By filling out that information, it also qualifies families for other free reduced...
Because just because the district is qualified doesn't mean that an individual that is in free reduced lunch makes you eligible for other things.
Individual families are not automatically eligible. All, well, all families, all children within our schools will be getting free lunches and breakfasts, regardless of their financial situation for the next...
Forty days.
Twenty-six, forty days. The state just also likes to see the application put in, because it also, in, in many towns, it's also used to give families breaks or free sports, free from sports fees, from transportation fees. And the state just likes to keep track of that information as well. So it's, it's not necessary that families fill out that application, but we will still be asking them to. The application can be on our website, whether, there are just two things that they, that we have to do. Either, the, the application either has to be downloaded, where, and then the parents fill it out by pen, send it in after completed, or the application needs to be within a secure website that allows them to automatically fill it out on our website, and that information is secured both from the outside and internally, that only certain people within the district are allowed to see that data.
Through the form?
We probably will not do that, we'll probably stay with a paper form. We'll, that will have it on our website until we're able to get a secure system in place, which we are working into.
Good news.
Very good. Yeah, that is good news. And that's all. But do you know, Rob, do you know how many of our kids in the district are on free and reduced lunch percentage?
Well, that would put, we'd have to have roughly sixty percent. So the fact that we applied for that and qualified means that that's what we're over as far as percentage.
Sixty percent of the threshold?
That we qualify of the application, yes. They do look at, they look at other data as well, it's not just the application, it's the income level the town's hold, and some other factors that I'm not sure of. It's not just that income level and the applications that they put in.
Good deal.
Now, at one point in time, I don't know if it's still true, but at one point in time, Pittsburgh, Gardner, Athol, Wincheton, that triangle, we were in the lowest five percent economically in the state. So I'm not surprised that we're, we've qualified.
The encumbrances, they are looking to pull back. Ballpark, I think, of how much is there in aggregate?
Total encumbrances we have right now are roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's the majority of that, I would say at this point, will still be paid for. There'll be items or services being rendered to the district. I'm just not sure of the exact number that we're not going to be able to fulfill. It, it becomes two things, it becomes whether we believe that we're actually going to get these items or services within a certain amount of time, and we have to be realistic with that. We can't say that we, we expect to get it in September, and then it doesn't come in until, you know, next spring. We also have to take into consideration that the town does have to close its books at some point. Now, usually, some items can be carried over. Last year, and I believe the year before, the town accounting department afforded the school department to carry over quite a few items for longer than they usually would due to COVID and supply chain issues. They have checked with the town, with the auditors that we use, and they would not be, they would not be in agreement with doing that again this year.
So your best guess, we have until September, October?
I would say the end of September at best.
But there's some confidence that the majority of that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars...
I believe so.
Will be spent, yeah. So then the forty thousand dollars will become ninety thousand dollars for some...
Whatever that...
Other number. Okay. Budget questions, Ted? Anything else? All right, so we have old business, future agenda, and then an executive session. I am sorry, I didn't know you lunch. So I know you're gonna say it, my chair.
Future, anything?
Okay. So do we wanna take a minute? Do we want to eat and move on? Gonna take a break? What are we looking at for the superintendent? Feedback, just general comments from, that's his opportunity to give us feedback on his performance from last year, and that has its...
Future agenda items, I mean, we've got a number of items down here. The only thing, having, having future agenda items is having the new teachers come, maybe the first or second.
Yeah, we, we have a reception for them.
Yeah.
From like five thirty to six.
Yeah.
And then at six o'clock, we've introduced them, had the principals introduce them. I think that's a nice thing to do. Rob is the volunteer to bake for that night?
Yeah, I don't think he would be volunteering for that. I'll be happy to stop off at Market Basket and pick up some of the items.
And unless I'm missing something here, I guess I would, unless people have closing comments that they wanted to make, I was gonna suggest that we move into executive session, and meanwhile, we're discussing what we need to discuss in executive session.
Yeah, let's just go back for a second, back to old business. We do have an agenda item for the superintendent's feedback, obviously, he can't do that, he was not here, so we may need a motion to table that item, if anyone's interested.
I have a question, I thought that the feedback was also something that we were going to work on, regarding the value of it, because I thought he gave us his accomplishments like two days ago.
Yeah, so we have a, um, document, for lack of a better word, that we could use to do that in a semi-formal way, where we would be able to, you know, provide some of the feedback to him. He did, in fact, make his presentation, we all observed the presentation at, at our last meeting?
No.
Two days ago?
Two or three before that.
And today is the opportunity for us to have a bit of a conversation with him about his accomplishments. That isn't really gonna be possible without him here. And we still have the option to do it in a more formal way, rather than just a roundtable discussion that actually provides some written feedback to him.
But he needs some kind of feedback from us.
Yeah.
And I think a couple of meetings ago, I, I had called Tracy Knobek, and she advised that we do an observational one, not an evaluatory one, because, you know, he was interim for half a year and before he actually got the job, so she, she thought it would be a good idea just to give him an observational kind of feedback, and then, you know, start the processes for his evaluation this year, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three. So that means we'll have to do a mid-year...
Right.
...performance, not an evaluation, but a feedback, and then at the end of the year, we do the summative. So he gets feedback twice.
He's just taking his sweet time, I'm trying to open a document that I have that I'm thinking about sharing with you all as an example of a document that we can use for exactly that purpose, what you just described.
Yeah.
Because right up until now, the superintendent does not have any form of evaluation, one of that from us. And being one of our, being one of our bigger responsibilities. So this is called, this, where did this come from? This is from the Sutton School District. It is really just a, you know...
A checklist?
Check, 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 check the box, check the list of some of the things that you would expect a superintendent to be involved in, and that would be completed by each one of the school committee members to then be rolled up into some form of substantial feedback.
Yeah.
It would not be a conversation like you're thinking about having today about what he has done, or what he thinks he has done, it would be more our actual evaluation.
And this comments, the Sutton's are better than they are?
Yeah, on everyone, you're welcome to make comments.
Sure.
So I'm happy to share that. Kudos to Liz for finding what seems like a really good form, Liz Victoria found that for us. I think it's a pretty good tool, and you'll see it when I send it to you.
Okay. Would you like it back?
Well, that's up to the group. I think tonight was about talking to him, and then we would do something like that after tonight. If we still want to talk to that about our thoughts on his performance, we would have to do that at some future meeting, and then provide our remarks or other thoughts. We could do them concurrently, we could, I could share this with you now. Our next meeting, as of a few minutes ago, is now August twenty-fourth. So we could take the next, how long that is, ten days? No, two weeks or so, to formulate our own thoughts, complete a document like that, and still have a conversation with him on August twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Sure.
Well, that's good, so, like, time.
Roll them?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I still have a motion to table eight A?
So moved. Second, second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Table. Okay, so you have the future agenda items there, the Murdoch trust presentation of funds was scheduled for August eighteenth. Do you know who's in touch with them, is that the superintendent?
That would be the twenty-fourth now.
Yeah. Would you mind, I will try to do the same, I'll try to remind, ask Liz and Ted to reach back up to them and see if they can change the dates as well.
Sure.
But just as a, a bell and suspensions. Does anyone see anything on this future agenda items that you would like to put a date to? So we have August twenty-fourth, our next meeting after that, I'm guessing must be the very beginning of September. Yeah, so then we've got September first and September fifteenth. So do we see anything here we'd rather do rather than later, sorry, right?
No, no, I'm thinking of whether there's anything we'd wanna do later, rather than earlier, since we're doing right now, on the twenty-fourth, we have the strategic plan discussion, which could take a while. If there's anything for the future agenda items that we could put off, if we're doing the superintendent discussion on the twenty-fourth too. I mean, I, I'd almost just prefer to see those as the only two items on the agenda, but... And we also are thinking about having a technology options presentation on the twenty-fourth from Bill again.
Right. Sounds like we got a full agenda for the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, so nine A through E, you would think about at least September and not later?
Yeah.
That's what I would suggest. We should...
Can't, can't we do the Murdoch trust?
What?
Any, he's jumped out of you, we should do it quickly.
Yeah, everyone's gonna do that presentation.
Yeah, the Murdoch trust breakdown, that, is that the same, uh, sit, not the same, but can't that be done with F on the twenty-fourth?
Being that, so that's, you know, definitely two different things, Murdoch trust presentation is grimy grim, and the Murdoch trust breakdown is what we're saying, plus all.
Yeah, so it could be one presentation, so just do that on the twenty-fourth. Any others we could spread out in September or October, even some of them?
I will have a couple of financial items put in.
Okay. Go to the twenty-fourth. Okay.
Because of me?
No, because of me.
No, I have, we're going to, I guess, for the future items, I'm not agree with ones that have been said, I just didn't know. The only other thing that we were trying to kind of tackle sooner rather than later, tech with the town, and then also that, with the, well, I guess that might be the next one, but I was thinking of the, template for subcommittees, or even just letting them, but also like our, our committee policies, I feel like that should be addressed as fast, as soon as possible, if we haven't done it for X amount of years.
Yeah. If we find out that we've got the attorney's review, and it's now garbage, cause it's so old, I think we can very quickly decide to add that to the agenda for the twenty-fourth. I think we can very quickly decide to add that to the agenda coming the 24th or September 1st.
Well, Greg, can you give us an update on the 24th, right, about what you learned from Don?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, just tell us what Don recollection is, and you're gonna dig through the files and see where that is. And so on the 24th, we could get some kind of where are we now? And then September, we could dive in to whatever we need to do.
Well, if we decide that we want to do the attorney review, then we can throw that whenever we want, 24th and 1st. If we don't do...
Exactly. If it's 15 years old, and I think it's pretty clear that we gotta do the attorney review.
If we decide not to do attorney review, because it just happened, you know, a few years ago, then we don't really need a vote, we need the policy committee to get to work. But, you know, our, Karen, right, that's your, that's your job.
Yeah.
As far as the technology update for remote meetings, I can gather that information and send it out as an email, so that it's not necessarily an item on a meeting.
Okay.
That can update you that way. And if you feel at some point you need to take, or vote for taking action, you could add that to a meeting in the future.
Well, we could do it, if, depending on what we find out, I mean, we certainly could add that as a...
I should have an answer next week about that.
You know, we don't, we don't have miscellaneous on the, on there. That's how I always protected myself as a principal. I always put miscellaneous down there, so if there was something we forgot or whatever, I would put it on miscellaneous.
Unanticipated discussions.
Yeah, there you go, unanticipated discussion.
Liz?
Yeah, just, you know, because sometimes, yeah, start it. And then we remember, and it's not on the agenda, we push it off. Sometimes you just want to deal with it then. My thoughts.
Okay. Okay, anything else about agendas? If anyone wants to make closing comments?
No.
No.
All right. Entertaining a motion to go into executive session.
Mister Chair, um, I make a motion that we move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so be cleared.
So declared.
So I guess the motion is to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, then adjourn from executive session. Second.
Any discussion?
We don't need, we don't need to adjourn from executive session back into open session. No purpose of adjournment, so. Okay, so that's my motion.
For adjournment.
Right.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And we are in executive session.
Which means not for now.
Yes.
That's the first thing on the...
Red light, no, no, right. All the way to the...